Recording has begun.
Thank you. All right, good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, June 15th regular meeting of the Los Alphas Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to order. The time is 7:04 PM. Please note that in support of the physical distancing during the local public health emergency, and in accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order, the relaxed Brown Act rules during the public health crisis, we are conducting the meeting via video conference. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioner, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you've called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment. And for the benefit of the recording, please practice considered video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call.
Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order said you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren.
Present.
Vice President Vaughn. Commissioner Kearney.
Here.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Here.
Commissioner Spreen.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka. Oh, Kavita.
Kavita.
Thank you.
Can you not hear me?
There you go.
Now we can.
Thank you. And Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Okay, all right, so we have six commissioners out of seven present. And for the benefit of the recording, I'll also conduct a presenters consultant and staff roll call. Acting Fire Chief Glass.
Present.
Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council Managing Director Rendler.
President.
Oh, you are wonderful. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Present.
District Consulting Engineer Jeff Tarantino. Emergency Services Manager Captain. Oh, Jeff is there? Thank you.
I am here. Yeah, sorry, I couldn't unmute myself.
No problem. I didn't have time to look at the list beforehand, so I apologize.
And Denise is here.
Yeah. And then, okay, General Manager Logan.
Present.
Lead Deputy County Counsel Chelliden.
Present.
Assistant County Counsel Koala.
He won't be attending unless we're going back to closed session.
Problem. Cert Program Analyst Bebe.
Present.
All right, and presenters, consultants, and staff are all accounted for.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We are coming from a closed session as everyone is aware. We completed that. We completed our discussion, so we will not be going to closed session at 8:30. So we will continue with our agenda as planned. So we don't need to accommodate that. Okay, so with that, we will continue with the agenda for the regular meeting. What a Okay, so I don't think I need to cover anything else here. So rest of my president's remarks. So first of all, it's almost summer. Welcome, everyone. So first of all, I'm tremendously pleased, you know, maybe still Jay's thunder, but I want to just congratulate the staff. County Council, all the people, Chief Glass, your team, the fact that you were all able to pull off getting Station Eight manned, and I believe it's either started today or with is eminent that there should be a crew at Station Eight as we head into wave. Even my dog approves. That, you know, this is really important, and I think it shows how Charlie impactful this team has become. And I don't want to diminish, you know, what what the team has done. I think it's enough, you know, goodness can't be said about it. And then, you know, saw all the pictures and the feedback from the event on Saturday. You know, we're coming out of this time of, you know, the pandemic, and what I saw in the pictures, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend, was real community. I mean, there was a lot going on there, you know, a big age span, and people able to come back together and build, you know, on the program we have and build for the future. And so that's truly impressive. So I want to thank the staff and everyone who made and was able to attend Saturday. I think that was truly important, and it shows the direction that this organization is headed. So thank you, everyone. All right, with that said, we'll now move to item three, which is public comment. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subject on the agenda may do so now. Please note, however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussions or actions tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose a shorter time limit. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? Please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any. Corey, are you seeing any?
I don't see any.
No, Victoria. Okay. All right, hearing none, we will now move to item four, the consent calendar and changes to the order of the board commission agenda. So we're moving to items four A through J. And so all right, so are there any comments from the staff on these items for the consent calendar?
Yes, Board President Warren, this is Jay Logan. I would just like to comment on item G, and that was the repair to the struck hydrant. That repair occurred today, and I'm pleased to announce the hydrant is back in service. Thank you.
Always good. Okay. All right. So the item of removing 12 G, 12, was it 12 I?
Of D.
12D. Do we do that now, or do we do that in a moment?
Well, we would request, it's part of the change of the order of the agenda, so we'd like to request to delete that.
Okay, so the item on the table is at the moment, we are going to remove 12D from the agenda tonight. And the reason is that county council requires additional time to look at the figures, and we're not ready to present tonight.
That's correct. Chris, if you
President Warren, I would say it wasn't so much that I had questions on the figures. I had some questions with staff that were not able to be resolved in time for this meeting. So get those resolved, and then we'll figure out what we're going to do from there.
Okay, does that in any way, shape, or form impact, because the budget year starts one July?
This is separate from the budget process in the sense that this is committing long-term funds more than for more than a year. So no, it doesn't affect the budget for July.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So that's the, that's, so what we're going to do is is that we're going to approve, we're going to look for a motion that we approve the consent calendar. If no one else has any items, they want to remove them the consent calendar. And then when we get to the, actually get to a motion, we will be also removing 12D from tonight's agenda, moving it to a future available agenda. So I'll do this formally now. Are there any questions from the commission on these items, or would any of the commissioners like to make changes to the consent calendar? Hearing none. All right, I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion? Now the commissioner seconding the motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording.
If you'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar.
And?
Commissioner Sherlock can second that.
But I wanted to remove, move item 12D from the tonight's agenda, too.
Sorry, Kavita.
I want to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar and remove 12D from the agenda.
All right. And Joe, do you second that?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Alan, you're clapping, or you got your hand up, or you're clapping? Alan, that's the, you want to, Alan, do you want to comment?
I was trying to put my hand up. If I was clapping, I apologize. I didn't see any background on 12D. I know you're removing it from the agenda, but I didn't see anything in the agenda that provided any detail with regards to that. Could you comment on what 12D is, or now that you want to remove it from the agenda, you don't want to comment on it? Thank you.
Jay, can we provide, you know, two second insight on what 12D is?
I certainly can, Jay. It's up to you, Jay, whatever you prefer.
Oh, sure. Thank you. I didn't hear my name there. 12D is a resolution that the commission passes every year for committed funds, and this will give us an opportunity to look more into the resolution process. And I believe that's what county council is going to assist us to do. So it's a matter of the language and the resolution. And then Chris can, county council can provide any extra detail.
Sure, I would just note that there are governmental accounting standards. I believe it's Rule 56, where public agencies are asked to essentially, it doesn't move funds around from different accounts, but it designates funds as either unassigned or committed. There's a few different categories as a way of doing long-term financial planning. And so that's what this resolution relates to. My guess is that, Jay, did we include the draft resolution of the materials, or was that taken out of the public materials because we knew it was going to be deleted? So it will be analyzed, and we will either report back at a future meeting or bring it back in a future meeting. But in general, it's government accounting standards relating to designating uses of funds based upon the intent of the local public agency. So pretty much all public agencies do this, this type of designation, including the district, as Jay mentioned, has done it for several years.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. All right. With that, and I see no additional public comments. All right, we will now move to vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
All right, President Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka. Not hearing you, Kavita.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not muted.
And Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
All right, and the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you. All right, well, now move to item five, Los Alphas Hills County Fire District Administration Monthly Report to the County Commission Committees. All right, items five A and B are various documents submitted to by the district or the county. Items five C and D are reports on the LAFCO County Fire Services Review. General Manager Logan, please provide the reports.
Yes, thank you, Board President Warren. I'm happy to answer any questions pertaining to these items. It was another good report from management audit on the progress of the district with the audit recommendations. And this progress was recognized by the Hewlett Committee. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Tyson and Commissioner Spreen for attending the FGOC and the Hewlett committee meetings for these monthly reports. And then item five D1 is the LAFCO Countywide Fire Services Review, and that review now is in progress. And this item is a request for the Board of Commissioners to appoint a Commission Ad hoc Fire Review Subcommittee as stated in the item. And the subcommittee would engage with the consultant and staff in the fire review process related to the district and also to the countywide fire review process. So as you recall, we had a Commission Ad Hoc Subcommittee for the Management Audit, and that was very instrumental and helpful, because with the commission meeting just once a month, oftentimes there are activities going on multiple times the month, and the subcommittee would be able to assist with those meetings. So thank you. That's the end of my remarks.
Okay, thank you, Jay. So the net net of that is that we're looking to form a subcommittee to support the both LAFCO and the county studies that are going on. So the the request here is the commission to approve the formation of a subcommittee, which the scope of those committees is to support both, both of those studies. And the term of that subcommittee's existence is tied to the needs of both of those studies is, kind of, so Chelliden, is that a fair way to bracket the boundaries of that subcommittee?
Absolutely, yes. I would just note, the reason we're doing it this way is so that it is what's called an ad hoc subcommittee, so that it is not subject to the meeting rules required under the Brown Act. But that also requires that it be composed of less than a quorum of commission members. And I know other members in terms of staff or members of the public, it needs to be just the commission and three or less members.
All right, so that means we need three members. My finger's holding up. That's four. Okay, so we need
Or it could be two, two, as long as it's less than a quorum. Yeah, it's up to the
Less than a quorum. All right, so we're looking, I'm looking for volunteers for, to sit on this. All right, so George and Roger have both volunteered to sit on the subcommittee. And if there's no other takers, because of my role here, I think it would be appropriate if I volunteered on the subcommittee. And so unless there is any other commissioner who would like to elbow me out of the way. Don't all speak at once. Okay. All right. All right, so the, what I need is a motion to form an ad hoc subcommittee to support the, the studies, the county studies, with the members being Commissioner Spreen, Commissioner Tyson, and Commissioner Warren.
I can do that. I move that we appoint three members of committee, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Spreen, and Commissioner Warren, to support the county studies.
Thank you, Kavita. I need a second, please.
Spreen, seconds.
Thank you, Roger. All right. With that, I need, so we have the motion on the floor. Is there any further comments from commission, from the commissioners? Seeing none. Is there any comment from the public on this item? All right, hearing none. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on the creation of the ad hoc fire review subcommittee with Commissioners Spreen, Tyson, and Warren serving as it, serving. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka. Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Okay, and the commission has approved the creation of the ad hoc fire review subcommittee with Commissioners Spreen, Tyson, Warren, serving by a vote of six to zero with one absent.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on to item six, receive Santa Clara County Fire Chief report. Item six A is a report. Acting Chief, Fire Chief Glass, please provide the report.
Good evening, commissioners, members of staff, and the public. On your screen, you should be seeing the May 2021 Public Service Report. 2021, we're a little bit ahead of pace than where we were for 2020. 341 calls within the fire district. That was 67 total calls in May. You can see the dispersment of calls and the weight of that response, and it stays pretty consistent with peak times being around noon and 5 o'clock. Forty, forty EMS calls, which contributed to about 60% of the total call volume shown on the pie chart in the large blue section. And then it breaks down from there, pretty consistent with our normal response, monthly response within the fire district. Response time, again, we met the overall grand total for the response time. However, I do want to identify that on one day, we did have Engine 71 from the Cupertino Fire Station that was covering El Monte, while the El Monte crews were attending their refresher training for wildfire. And that engine company did take approximately 14 minutes to get to one call. The call was located off of Lytico Circle, and it was initially dispatched as a code two response, meaning without the lights and the sirens. So the crew left the station and proceeded with normal traffic patterns. At some point during that call, then it was upgraded to code three. So then the engine basically started with a slight delay. However, when we average that into the total calls, you can see that in the rural density area, we arrived at seven minutes and 19 seconds for those 21 code three responses. And again, our urban density call volume we're shooting for the 759, and we arrived at 619 on average. So again, we did have a misstep on that one call, and we did look into it. We are researching it. And again, it was, it's what I would call an anomaly in the system. And that occasionally happens. The initial call type comes in, it gets coded as code two, and then as we get amplifying information, then we can increase the response of the apparatus. Dollar loss was at $500. It does say incident count one, but when I, I did run the numbers and look at it, it appeared to be that it was a baking accident that occurred, $300. And I know that, and that was for my Engine 70, 76, I believe. Let me pull that up really quick. Yeah, it was a cooking incident that occurred. Owner had a baked item in the oven that caught fire and was extinguished. There was no extension, and the damage was to the oven only. So that's where we had that dollar loss value. Obviously, we can participate in the community events programs. And on the map is the dispersment of the calls that we talked about. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
All right. Thank you, Chief Glass. Is there any discussion from the commissioners?
If I might, I do have on the call today, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen really quick, if I can remember how to do it. The Acting Assistant Fire Chief, Suwana Kirkow, is on the, on the line today. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce her to the Board of Commissioners as well as the staff. Suwana will be acting as the Assistant Fire Chief while Chief Bowden is out. The commission may know, and I'll provide a brief update. The Fire Chief did have a back surgery, and the results of that back surgery were not as positive as we had hoped. So the Fire Chief will be going in for a second surgery sometime in July with an expected recovery of four to six months. So with that being said, I will be serving in the Acting Fire Chief role, and Chief Kirkow will be serving as the Acting Assistant Chief. So there may be times where I'm unable to attend this meeting just due to a conflict. I will still make every effort to be at this meeting, but in the event that I'm not available, I will have Chief Kirkow attending. Just so a little bit of history, Chief Kirkow is our Deputy Chief of Administration and Planning, and she is responsible for overseeing all the data for the, the agency. She also produces these public safety reports in cooperation with our IT Division and our Operations Division. So she is probably much better suited to discuss some of the anomalies that are found in the data. And when I don't have the answer, she's the one I turn to to help me answer Mr. Epstein's questions as, as they come up occasionally. So with that, I'd like to have Suwana just go ahead and introduce yourself to the commission.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be before you. Can everybody hear me? I just want to make sure I'm, okay, good. And again, it's an honor to be in this position. I do wish and hope, as we all do, for speedy recovery for Chief Glass. So Chief Bowden, while Chief Glass is serving as the Acting Fire Chief, and I'm happy always just either in this forum, or if you want to reach out to me via email through Chief Glass or directly to me to answer any questions regarding our data. Thank you.
And the last thing, if we have one more opportunity, I'd just like to share this photo. This, the photo of the very first crew that was assigned to the Palo Alto Station Eight assignment, as a result that was discussed in the president's comments earlier, I just figured that this was a good opportunity to show this crew poised and ready to go to work protecting both Los Alphas Hills, Palo Alto, and Central Fire District. So again, appreciate the support of the Fire District and Palo Alto as we move this forward.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and welcome, Chief Kirkow. All right, is there any comments, questions from the commission?
Any regulation goatee, chief?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Palo Alto crew?
Is that a regulation goatee on that engineer?
Okay, so that's a great question, Commissioner. Palo Alto Fire does allow facial hair, which is back to some of the earlier discussions that we have with the General Manager of the operational impacts of the rules, the regulations, policies, and procedures. Those were some of the hurdles that county fire, we have policy on tattoos and facial hair. That's just some of the many, many different differences between our agencies. They're not insurmountable, but again, definitely there is some differences, and that was why we chose to end up having just the full Palo Alto crews for a month, and then the full county fire crews for a month. So we didn't end up with those, those little issues.
Very good. All right, any other questions for the commissioners? All right, hearing none, we'll move to any public comment on these items? See no hands raised. All right, thank you, Chief Glass. We'll now move to item seven, which is the Station Eight update. Station seven, I'm seven A, is the report. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Yes, well, I, I would ask Chief Glass if he has any other comments on the opening of Station Eight. I think he probably
No, other than it went off successfully in initial first day. Again, always will be watching it and available to support Palo Alto during that first week. As we get, the dispatching is going to be the biggest thing we have to keep an eye on. And we have assigned our Battalion 74 to keep an eye on every call that's dispatched up there in these first few weeks to make sure that we're hitting the mark.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to comment that Supervisor Semidian, at the Board of Supervisors budget hearing today, thanked the district, Central Fire, City of Palo Alto, and Office of County Council for the great work and speed by which the efforts were accomplished, and regional benefits for fire and emergency protection afforded by the agreement to open Palo Alto Fire Station Eight. And Board President Wasserman also made his congratulations and thanks to Supervisor Semidian. So that's the end of the report on item seven, Fire Station Eight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commissions on this item? One quick question, Chief Glass, when is the first Central Fire Crew going to be on duty? Is that July 1st?
Yes, sir, it is.
They'll be there all July?
Yep, all in July and September.
Okay, very good.
This is a point of interest. This picture behind me I took on my hike a month or two ago, on the way up to Station Eight. Definitely worth your time for those who haven't been up there. It's, it's a beautiful place and worth your time.
Very good. Any other commission comments or questions? All right, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes.
Jordan. Yes, Steve Jordan, please.
Yes, hi, Steve Jordan, with charisma. Congratulations on the opening of Station Eight, by the way. I, I'm curious, was LAFCO approval obtained for this, for this providing service, if I understand it right, outside of the fire district?
All right. County Council, Sheldon, can you address that question? You're on mute, Chris, you're on mute? Chris, you're still on mute?
I understand. LAFCO approval was not obtained.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further public questions, comments? All right, hearing none, we'll now move to item eight, the General Manager Report. Item eight A is a report. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Okay, can everyone see, see the report?
Yes.
Okay, sharing the screen.
Wait, wait, how did we get, how did we wind up big in Japan?
So this is part of the report. We're very pleased that we're able to offer some of our county fire programs in various languages. That's on the cover. And then also, Green Waste is now retreating back to their monthly service at That's on the cover. And then also Green Waste is now retreating back to their monthly service at Foothill College. No longer using Prisma Park, so I'm sure that the town is happy to get their park back. So that's the opening for the, the first slide. And then moving on, and I know when I looked at the Emergency Services Manager and Cert Report, there's all kinds of photos. But just wanted to share my photos and shout out to all the participants at a very lovely teen cert graduation. And I had not see the fire crew that's in the middle for over a year and a half. And it's just amazing. This was my first event out at a public gathering. So it was very refreshing to be out and see the big smiles and that everybody was just so happy to be back together again. Really a sense of community, as you pointed out, President Warren, very helpful. And then this is the defensible space fuel monthly drop off and just highlights of how it will take place now reverting back from Prisma Park to Foothill College campus. Social distancing is still in place, COVID restrictions are still in place and partnership with Green Waste. And there's a link for more information. We're loading all of this up into the Los Altos Hills County Fire District dot org website. And then the last slide just talks about non-English preparedness classes. And when I received the flyer, I reached out to some friends who are fluent in Asian and Pacific languages just to ask about what, were there any complications or how the language would work with our community? And these were some of the takeaways that I was able to, to gather. So it was really helpful to me and to the staff to understand the various dimensions when you start getting into presenting classes in other languages and how to post them, how to be sensitive to the language, how to do it appropriately. Because I, I've got to say, when I look at a flyer and I don't really understand what it means, I don't know the appropriateness of it. So we did some research on that and came up with a good result. So I just wanted to share that with the, with the commission. And that's the end of my, my slide program. Thank you. Any questions?
General Manager Logan, I have a request that on Saturday, there's supposed to be a, another is the first chipping day or brush drop off. And we're going to be back at Prisma. Can we arrange to have a sign put up at Prisma Hills saying that, that the drop off has moved back to Foothill? Because we've trained people for a year to go to Prisma and I could see people going there and not being there and not understanding what's happened.
I will reach out to the town about that for sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
We have some, some council members, any comments they want to make or would you like me to reach out to the town staff?
If you'd reach out to the town staff, that'd be great.
Perfect. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners, Joan?
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to say what an incredible event that was and a shout out to Victoria Denise and the team and all the volunteers that showed up. It was such a positive experience to see that many, it was like twenty teenagers that all got trained to be, you know, certs. And everybody enjoyed it. Everybody loved being out and having the social interaction again. It was such a lovely community event. Just wanted to thank you, Victoria, for all the efforts you put in there. It was amazing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners? Seeing none. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none. All right, we will now move to item nine, which is receive the Emergency Services Manager's report. This is items nine A and B. Are the report, Emergency Services Manager Gluhann and Cert Program Analyst BB, please provide the reports.
Thank you, President Warren. Thank you, Commissioners, Public and Staff Members and other presenters. These are some logos of some of the interactions for this report. I'm going to make this really quick, spend a little bit more time with Victoria's report on the CERT event. Next slide, please. So this is a pretty traditional of what the, the things that I do monthly. Some of the key newer things, I've been attending the other surrounding area fire safe council meetings. Additionally, we had the goats come in over the, between the period of, of last meeting, well, they arrived the day before last meeting. We did a lot of really nice surveying with that, with Jackson's drones. And then we continue, we're going to be involved. I wanted to show up in that right-hand corner. There's a wildfire, the Open Space Committee has arranged for Dr. Matteo Gabalotto to come from UC Berkeley and Wednesday night from seven to nine. Victoria, I believe, will, if we need help, there's a link on our website and I think the town's website to that. It's a Zoom meeting. It is remote. Also Commissioner Tyson and myself will be there assisting with local questions. And next slide. And then kind of the main focus that I've been trying to move along, we have the shaded evacuation route hardening. It's a shaded fuel break treatment. This is a few pictures of Moody Road. Actually, the bottom right-hand corner is actually El Monte. So this is just finishing up scope and finalizing the letters that go to residents. We're working on the permissions and the, the town interactions. There's approximately three and a half miles. It says three miles here. It's about three and a half going all the way from Page Mill Road down to is it Stone, Ston Brook, right at the college stoplight, right at the college entrance on El Monte. So it'll be both sides of the road. So it's actually ends up being about seven miles of treatment altogether because each side of the road is a treatment. So you kind of double that. We will be, there's in the process of being a website about the project being built on Fire Safe Council website, which will be linked to our website. So that as soon as that's up and live, we'll let you know and you can see more details. And then we're working on, we didn't have as much issues around permitting on Page Mill. This one, we have a lot more issues around permitting. We have a creek, which is a fishing game or fishing wildlife, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong term issue. So we have to be really careful and cognizant. There's a lot of biological reports that need to go alongside this. And then obviously road closures, a lot of bicyclists and, you know, it's going to be hard for them to hear the chippers. So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that goes on with this project that's maybe a little bit more involved. It's a pretty, pretty big project. So that's coming up. More information at the next meeting. We should have some more details on letters going out in the scope of work. And next slide. So we'll let Victoria take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Good evening, everyone. Quite exciting weekend for us, as you've heard already. Really want to start off by talking about some collaboration because this definitely wasn't just a me event. So more collaboration on what I do normally scheduled. We're still working with some online damage assessment tools in our CCLT program manager meetings, which I chair. We also have been learning about grants that are available for emergency preparedness that I'd like to work on for this year. Always, you know, teen cert board meetings, I've been helping collaborating with Leisha Schmidt as well as Joan Sherlock on doing an emergency preparedness fair hopefully in September, focused on wildfire evacuation education. And I'm still attending the ECC meetings and working on them to collaborate in some emergency communications drills that are, that are much needed. We did have a cert game night, quite a success. We had about ten people come. Really nice to just hang out and play a game and learn how to work together as a team. And we've had some requests to do it more. So we'll definitely be doing that. Still working on silver alerts. We need to do a process. So Marcia and I, before she leaves, will be putting that together. Thank you to the Sheriff's Office for working with us on, on that. We're also really going to be working on more in-person public events and our participation in different and with different cert groups in their towns as well. So stay tuned for that. I'll be going to the Cert National Conference in Branson, Missouri. I'm really excited. If anyone knows any good places to go there, let me know. I've never been there, don't know anything about it. Really excited to be able to go there. I'm going to be taking classes and learning some new things about how to push out programs for CERT. So really excited on that. September focus is going to be National Mercy Preparedness Month. Stay tuned for that. Denise and I are now instructors for Stop the Bleed. So we'll be offering some public classes on that as well. Down to the good stuff. So Saturday, we were out there early in the morning with, we ended up graduating nineteen certs, teen certs, which is really, really awesome. And I'm really happy that we have that many. Like I said, this was a huge group effort. We've had twenty-one instructors and volunteers from some different CERT programs. Thank you to Santa Clara County Fire Department for allowing us to use their resource Rescue Seventy-four and your Battalion Chief Art Tomasetti. Big thank you to Marcia Hovey from the town and Heppenstall from the city of Los Altos. Obviously Denise as well, you know, really lots of prep to make this a success. We had some VIPs that came. It was nice to see Carl Cahill out there. He actually stayed and I think him, he and Leisha Schmidt talked for a while with Joan and some of our commissioners. They just, you know, were just really enjoying the nice shade and, and the, you know, five-star lunch slicer. We also had Lieutenant Newball Swiller from the Sheriff's Office. And then we had some of our commissioners come, George Tyson, Roger Spring, Joan Sherlock and then Jay Logan. They all four were voluntold to do some talking at the graduation ceremony, but I know they are very happy to do it. They were awesome. Jay did just a fabulous introduction. And I wish I would have recorded it because it was pretty, it was pretty tremendous. Just to kind of give you a little idea, just some action shots. So we had three stations in our morning rotation, fire suppression. We had Ashley St. Sin from Campbell Cert. She's also, I believe, a Hayward firefighter. We had Dave Stewart, Eduardo Arias and Don Gladstone from Los Altos Cert as well. It was really cool. So each group and each station had multiple collaborations there, different certs from different areas. And also we had our illustrious Rescue Seventy-four. Cribbing was run by a Los Altos Cert Harry Guy. We had two of our people, Stephen Mira. And then we had Damage Assessment Station that was run by Los Altos, Patricia Evans and Cookie Marada. And then we had a search and rescue, Ed Bridgeman from Los Altos Hills, Fred Evans and Art Ripple from Los Altos. The two Rescue Seventy-four engine crew were, I cannot remember their names, I'm so sorry. Were fabulous in showing the kids how to do lifts and carries. Very, very, I mean, they were working hard all day, great attitudes, really loved it, loved having them. We had our graduation. There's Jay doing an introduction. And then we had Roger, I'm sorry, I meant to find a picture of you, Joan. I just couldn't find one. I know I have one, but here's Joan and George and then the Battalion Chief Tomasetti over there. So big thanks to everyone for coming. You guys definitely made the graduation. They weren't done yet, though. We still had to go through a medical op station. So we had five different stations. They learned splinting, head-to-toe assessment, stop the bleed, triage and airway. They really loved the medical part. I've gotten some feedback from them. And, you know, it's really hard to impress teens, but I will tell you, I got very, very minor, you know, feedback that was actually really good suggestions on how we could kind of twist things a little bit, but they loved it. So this is your graduating new teen cert, number one academy for Los Altos Hills. Really, really proud of them. And thank you again to the commissioners, you know, the staff, Santa Clara County Fire Department, City of Los Altos, Town of Los Altos Hills. You know, you guys are what made this program and I just want to say thank you to all of you. And that is the end of my report. Denise, anything to add? I'm going to go, no. Oh, there we go.
Nothing for me. If there's any questions, please feel free.
All right. So thank you EMS Captain Gluhann and Cert Program Coordinator Analyst BB. Is there any discussion from the commission? So we'll start with the shows on my screen. Roger, you're the furthest one to the left.
Okay, just a quick comment. I'm, all of this is really exciting. But as someone who lives along Moody Road, I'm really excited by this shaded fire break project, both for what it's doing and also as a way to really educate a lot of people who live along this corridor. So I'll be looking, I'll be looking forward for ways to whatever website information you, you want to put up there. I'll try and be thinking of ways to either start email campaigns or something to get all these neighbors here knowing this. Because I think they're really going to get a kick out of knowing what's going on there and why. And that's for fire prevention and fire safety. So I think this is a great chance for us to make a visible impact and really raise the level of awareness of what the district does. So I'm really excited about it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Roger. And, and one of the really important things is it's really tying the shaded fuel break we have on Page Mill into, basically to Highway two eighty. That was kind of the, it's a, it's a really key evacuation route. You know, for either, either direction, going to two eighty or getting to Page Mill to go to two eighty, depending on the, the evacuation requirements. So, and then there's a lot of private roads up off there, you know, so there's a lot of volume that needs to go on that road. So having it is, you know, as, as cool as possible, also for incipient fires. That's, you know, if the, let's say a car fire, something starts, Chief Glass can speak or Eugenia Rendler to some of the says they've had on seventeen with the shaded fuel break that was done with that, where they've had really reduced fire spread because of the shaded fuel break treatment on Highway seventeen. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. George, I see you got your hand up.
Well, I already commented earlier to Victoria about how much I enjoyed the teen cert activities. And just, I thought of something to add to that later, and that is certainly, it was great to see the young people, what they were learning. But I tell you, what I really enjoyed also was, was the experienced regular certs who were there to do the training. And the names you listed there, some of them, I had no idea they were Los Altos Cert, but I already knew them. One person I stopped working with eighteen years ago, he was there. It was so much fun for me. So I just wanted to say it was great to see the intergenerational aspect of that, sharing the experience. And I just know those, those young people, I think I said this in my speech, wherever they go, they're going to carry this, the knowledge with them and they'll be able to help their community wherever, wherever that is in the future.
Thank you, George. Any other comments from commissioners?
I just, just to Roger's point, I think you're right. That's a great opportunity. It's a great way for us to get the word out and maybe even have something on site while they're doing the work where people can get more info. So it's a great idea. We can work on that, Roger.
All right. And I would just like to say regarding the teen cert program, I mean, just to echo what everything, everyone else has just said. But I also was thinking about, you know, in the last year, the, these kids have lost so much in terms of their, your high school education experience. And no, you know, no, no school, most of them didn't have in-person school, no sporting events, no dances, all those things that. And I really think that what you gave them was a chance this year to be part of something bigger and some sense of community and participation and meaning. And I really think that that's important, was really important this year. And I think it's, that's a good process, you know, program moving forward. But I think it's really been important for this last year for that group of young people. So thank you.
President Warren, we do have another opportunity, not this weekend, but then the following weekend, we're doing an adult skills session. So Victoria can give you some more details on that if anybody would like to come out and see that one.
Great. Thank you, Captain Gluhann. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. All right. We'll now move to item ten, which is the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Update. Item ten A is the update from Santa Clara County Fire Safe Council Managing Director Rendler, please provide the update. Eugenia, you're on mute. There we go.
I got it. Okay. I'm not on mute anymore. Thank you. Well, a great deal of what I was going to mention, Denise has excitedly mentioned about the Moody El Monte Road escape route or evacuation route. So that's wonderful. One thing I would like to add is that the field verification was recently done between our project manager and Denise, who, you know, is your project manager on your side. And the drainages were outlined and we looked at the creeks, which Denise has also brought up. But we also verified that your heritage trees are not in the project area. So I just wanted to confirm any potential concerns about the really big heritage trees that are over three feet in diameter. They are all outside your project area and will not be touched by the work that's being done to, you know, harden that road and that area. The, the trees are important. They're huge and they add shade. So they actually help the whole process. I don't know if anybody had concerns or questions about that, but we generally find to the public that that's an important detail. Um, next, I wanted to follow up and just support, show you a little bit of support that we do for the additional, sorry, I lost the screen. We also have a great deal of materials available in nine other languages and they are approved by the California Office of Emergency Management on our website. And I know I've discussed this, so I think that the links are being built. Sorry, I'm struggling with bandwidth tonight. Here we go. Share. But uh, so these are the additional languages that we offer disaster guides in and wildfire evacuation. And they also have the hazard zones and how to prepare your go bags for, and your, they call them go boxes or food boxes and things. So it supports the So it supports the work that you're already doing, you know, specifically with events and these are easily downloadable off of our. Website and they can be handed out at anyone's events. They're, you know, public domain, feel free to. Access down the link to our website, those kinds of things. I think it's important that everyone is starting to really. Get these materials out here in multiple, multiple languages. And then finally. Well, two more things. I, to give you another example of what Denise is talking about, a specific example. The evacuation route that was put in on Tarkall Road in 2017 by a large collaboration that we led. Had a car fire on June 1st and the effectiveness of the way these fuel breaks and evacuation routes go in. Even four years later, that car fire was held to a quarter acre. So the work that we're doing and the work that, you know, you're providing the funding for is excellent. And we're showing that it really, really pays off. We have several successes on. Highway 17, which of course was a huge progress, a huge project. But even the side roads and the feeder arteries and things, very important to do the work there too. And then finally, I know that there's been. Discussion and questions and information needed about our home ignition zone inspections. So I'd like to take the chance to answer any questions about. What that may, you know, look like, what kind of concerns have come up there, what our process is. And I can also show you the training that we go through as assessors. Did the screen change? Sometimes it doesn't change. Okay. So this is, our assessors all go through the NFPA, which is your. National Fire Protection Association. They're the only people that have a national standard for the home ignition zone. Assessments and all of our assess, assessors use the home ignition zone courses from here. It's a two-day course, hands-on. They go through. Actual, you have to pass many exams actually onsite at homes. You know, in order to be able to get your certificate, to be able to come and assess her, and this is the, the course that we use for that. And our assessments just reopened last month. So we have already completed six more off of the, your particular waitlist. We had a waitlist of over 80 when we reopened. Los Altos Hills waitlist is now down to. Well, it was down to 11. We've had two more requests this week. So technically we're at 13 on the waitlist right now. And we'll be addressing most of those within the next three weeks is what our, our current schedule, maybe four weeks is to get. The last of those finished up. The, the request forms are still open on our website. We never closed the request forms. We just notified people they would be waitlisted until. We got down into the orange and yellow tiers, which happened of course last month. So. So are there any questions about our home ignition zone? It's a hot topic right now and people are really interested in them. And so. That's why I wanted to give a little bit of space for what does that look like? Because everybody is writing about it and posting about it right now. From UC extensions to home hardening workshops and all that type of thing.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything else, Eugenia?
No, those were the big three. Thank you.
Gordon has a question.
Hang on, let me get to the commission questions. And then questions from commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Carney. Eugenia, I, with your permission, Mark. Yeah, I've got several questions for you, but I'm filtering them through Jay. It'd really be great to have answers to them as soon as we can get them. We've also got on the line Lisa Schmidt, who's heading up the task force of the town. They're super interested in these issues also. So rather than go through the details on the, on the commission call, we'll take that offline with you and work on that as quickly as we possibly can, I hope.
Sure. I believe that Jay and I have turned around some of those today for you.
Great.
Thank you. Any other commission questions? All right, seeing none. Kit Gordon, public comment?
Hi, thank you for taking my question. I'm not sure. Who would really be directed to, but I was wondering if it's something the Fire Safe Council might consider. I spent a long time working on water conservation. And a very successful program was called the Green Gardeners, teaching landscapers about. Low water irrigation and low water plants. And I wonder if there's something similar that could be done. For fire safety, not to replace, I mean, not to turn every gardener into a home inspection person, but. Just to understand about fire ladders and vegetation near buildings. If there's any kind of fire safe gardener program that could at least. Educate the, the people that are working in a lot of these properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Kit. Eugenia, I'll let you take that one. Take it back and think about it.
Well, I can, I can let you know initially that our preferred contractors do go through a defensible space training. That's one of the ways they get to be our preferred contractors and that's who we bid out when we do services for you. And the other big challenge there is that they don't have a lot of time for this. Honestly, we have a program for them and we never got much traction. It's not the type of thing that landscapers want to pay their staff to attend. So we're trying to find ways to support that with grants and. Overcome some of that challenge. But our preferred folks that we do use for your contracts and, and everyone else, they do have training from us.
Very good. Thank you, Eugenia.
Could I, could I just interject that, at least with the water conservation program, they did find funding for it. And they did pay the gardeners. So it was, you know, they understand the, the financial impact of, of training and time.
Right.
Thank you. Any additional public comment, questions? All right. If there's none other, thank you, Eugenia. All right. We'll now move to item 10B, approval of the agreement with. David Russ Barnett. Item 10B1 is the report. General Manager Logan, please provide the report.
Yes, thank you, Board President Warren. I think this was a really good conversation and thank you to Eugenia Render. And to the members of the public that spoke this very helpful ideas. But because the whole area of integrated hazardous fuel reduction is getting so much attention and is so important. And such a key program for the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. We did some research in, this represents that, and that is to add resources to our district. And so I'm really pleased tonight to introduce Dave Barnett. And to recommend to the commission approval of an independent consultant agreement between the district and Chief Barnett. For consulting services related to the integrated hazardous fuel reduction program and projects from June 15th. Through the end of the year, December 31st, 2021, for up to 20 hours per week. And then in that agreement, you'll see Exhibit A is the work plan that is outlined of projects aimed at. The integrated hazardous fuel reduction such as HIC, shaded fuel breaks, fuel, fuel breaks. And various components of vegetation and fire fuel mitigation. And also to assist with strategic plan goal one, which is the district CWPP Annex Four. And I know we have a very definite time span on that and I really want to get some momentum going on the CWPP. Because it is one of our foundation documents and Chief Barnett can help us with that. I'd like to ask Chief Barnett, he's on the phone, have been very diligent, listening to the commission meetings, to introduce himself. Give you some background and comments about his interest in the district and then to answer any questions. And I'd just like to say that Chief Barnett and I started talking a couple of weeks ago. And in that time, we've spent a lot of time together and I think he's read as much as I can send him about the commission and the district. So. I'm just very impressed with all of the things that he's been able to read and absorb. And I think it'll just be very nice to turn this meeting over to him for a few moments and. Dave, if you're there, would like to introduce you to the Board of Commissioners and to the staff and members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. And. Thank you, Commission, Commissioners and Staff and Chief Glass. And the public. It's an honor to be before you. This is my first introduction to any organization virtually. Usually my interviews in the past have been in person. My last interview with the job was 26 years ago with the fire chief. And so, again, this is an honor. My goal is to introduce, you know, with some of my experiences, it's relevant to what you. As board have approved in your strategic plan, to talk a little bit, you know, specifically about my project management, you know, be available for questions. And also be able to share with you why I'm interested in the job, why I'm interested in working for the district. And so I'm gonna share a screen, General Manager Logan, and you might forgive me if sometimes. Jay, if I call you Chief Logan, just because that's just how I was brought up. My bosses for the last 25 years have been chiefs. So I will. Try to be aligned with the organization titles. So. I'm going to share this PowerPoint with you that shares a little bit. Let me set up. Okay. So again, my name's Dave Barnett. I, I live in San Mateo right now. I, I'm from the East Coast, went to Berkeley, came out to Berkeley to play water polo for Cal. Yes, against Stanford often. And so hopefully on this side of the bay, you won't hold that against me. So I did meet my wife in, in Berkeley. We've been married for almost 30 years now. Raised two beautiful girls in the peninsula. I've done a lot of bike riding and, you know, I'm familiar with Page Mill. I got married, my, my. My reception was at the Palo Alto Hills Country Club. I lived in Los Altos Hills for.
David, you're supposed to be building out your slide. It's just showing your name right now.
Yeah, it is. I, I will, I have a. I, I will, you know, there's some animations just so that way all the words don't pop up at once. So I did live in Los Altos for a year as I was remodeling in Redwood City on Covington. And it was wonderful to be part of that neighborhood and played water polo at Foothill College in my younger days and so forth. So. Anyway, you know, my education, as I said, was at Berkeley. Chabot College Paramedic School through Menlo Park. I've also been educated during my 25 years. In the department as a, as an instructor, company officer, chief officer certified through the Office of the State Fire Marshal. The number of hours I've spent in classrooms since I got hired has been continuous for 25 years. And it's been a wonderful experience to continually learn. As an experience, I, I'm currently a battalion chief with San Jose. I'm approaching my 25-year mark and I've been, from the, from the time I got, was promoted to battalion chief. I've been covering San Jose, South San Jose, which my, there's five battalions in San Jose and I supervise eight stations. 10 different companies in South San Jose. And again, this. I did a survey through the NASA website and so I, I cover approximately 125 areas of first response, square miles. And then my population is approximately, you know, four and a quarter that I'm, I'm responsible first due. That includes hospital, all the freeways. Power plants, the, the wildland areas is a significant interaction with both Cal Fire and then also to my. Southwest County Fire. And then during a brief stint, while I was battalion chief from 14 to 17, I was also the, the, the training chief. I had been the training captain in six, oh, seven, oh, eight for two years, but I moved into the training position role, which was. Taught me a lot about budget management project, working with other jurisdictions and so forth. So. I was also worked through the ranks, captain, fire engineer, paramedic, hired initially in 96 through 2006. Yeah, the, you know, looking at the, the service contract that I have and what. General Manager Logan has asked me to help the district with, I know that vegetation management. It, it is, is something that you top of the list, you know. And getting that work done. I have experience in that area. As, as well as prescribed burns, fire suppression repair, both within San Jose Fire, as well as working with Cal Fire and the US Forest Service. I was at the Sabra's Fire. So if you've ever driven by the, the, the Point Sir Lighthouse. Everything from the Bixby Bridge all the way down to the Pfeiffer and everything about three miles, actually more than that. It was probably like 10 miles in. Was my responsibility to do vegetation and suppression repair in that area, managing crews. And working with other jurisdictions there, prescribed burns, we, we, I've done several, either within San Jose of Recruit Academy. Working with county parks. Where their vegetation management needs to get rid of star thistle and other objectives they had. As we align that with our training objectives, as well as underneath Cal Fires, you know, prescription for, for being able to burn. I've also done a lot of, been involved in a lot of firing operations on incidents, you know, last year. At the SCU complex, we had to limit the amount of burning we did because ranchers needed the grass for the winter. So we had to find other control lines south of Mount Hamilton. And that required as an operations person, working with the local ranchers and the community as opposed to just finding a line that was convenient. It was, it was what they needed for their, for their cattle. I've, I've been involved in vegetation management that did prescribe burn in Isabel Valley on the other side as well with. Cowfire, as ranchers needed brush to be burned for more grass. I've been involved with vegetation management projects that didn't end up getting burned, like for instance, Guadalupe Oaks in San Jose. Where they chose goats instead of grass. The fire would have been good for the oaks, but the smoke and the complexity in that area, it wasn't going to work. So we went, the parks went a different direction and, but the collaboration there, you know. Didn't result in prescribed fire, but we went through all the pros and cons and the, the directors decided to go a different direction for management. For vegetation management. So I've worked with, in all these projects for vegetation management. You know, a lot of other agencies, federal, state, local, to determine what's needed and, and get through to. You know, objectives where we as the workers, you know, the agencies and jurisdictions wanted us back. It's pretty much a common theme is, as an operations person, I feel, whether it's a structure fire, an EMS call. You know, if we're there to serve and, and we want to leave a good impression and, and we want the, the residents and the stakeholders to want us back. So, and, and my involvement, I know there's some alphabet soup as I, here as I talk regionally, you will see South Bay IMT. And I can answer some of those questions in a future slide, but I have a lot of experience working with local agencies. In the re, in the county, within the whole Bay area as well as statewide. You know, Fire Scope is the primary organization which manages terminology and. All the rules and policies which we operate together in mutual aid that make this, the fire and rescue system work so well mutually. State Education Advisory Committee, I sat on that board to work out through training. Across again, multiple jurisdictions, multiple stakeholders. I'm currently one of the ICs for the South Bay Incident Management Team, one of the managers along with Chief Glass. And. So it's been a wonderful experience working regionally and that's my experience. And, you know, as I said. I, I, I'm doing a lot of talking here and I'll, and I want to allow for some questions. I think that some of the questions that you may have. As I take my experience and talk about some of your strategic goals, how I can help with each one. So. Unless anybody has an immediate question, I, I think I will, as I said, go into your strategic goals and how I could help there. But does anybody would like to just pause me and, and I'll get a drink of water maybe, just for a second?
Any questions from the commissioners at this point?
Let the man get a drink of water.
I know, solid for time. All right, Roger's got a question.
Go ahead.
Roger, you're on mute.
Sorry for being such a, making such a naive mistake. I don't have a question. I just have a statement, which is that, you know, what's really giving this district. The momentum and energy it has right now and what makes it such, what's transformed it from what we were three to four years ago. Is we're a reflection of the culture that Chief Logan has created in hiring people like Denise, Victoria, Sarah. Who are just getting things done at all fronts. So what I'm surprised and delighted by. Is to see someone with a combination that I would not have predicted, that has both. Deep domain knowledge. Project management experience far beyond, you know, what we've, what we've had here in the previous people. And familiarity with local and state agencies that, it's a complex patchwork that still confuses me to this day. So. I think that if. You know, if, if someone's willing to come in and join the culture that we've got, that Jay has created. This kind of expertise really strengthens the teams. I'm quite excited to see what this can do.
Well, I appreciate that Commissioner Screen and, and I want to talk a little bit about, you know, why the district. Cause honestly, and Eugenia knows, you know, it was. I was thinking about what am I going to do after I leave? And I wasn't sure if there was a job for me. I mean, what I've done in the state regionally and working together and get, and managing projects where there's multiple stakeholders and jurisdictions involved, public, private, educational. Has been immensely rewarding. And so I was thinking, it was, you know, that as Fire Safe Council was looking for potential project managers. Full time, it wasn't my time to leave. I was planning on leaving in January. From, and transitioning and it's important for me and, and Commissioner Screen, I appreciate the word succession planning in, in your strategical. Because that is really one of my, as a training chief, one of my heart, an organization really can't, you know, needs people to continue and carry the torch of what's happened in the past. So I've really had a plan for the last two years in what I'm responsible for the department to continue, so that my organization can continue. And I'm on that path well, where basically by the end of this month, I will have people in place that are trained to do the job that I've been doing and the projects I'm working on. And then I was planning on for the, the last six months through this wildland season, helping them and I, and so this part-time position. Will allow me to work for the district and then also help with the transition in, in San Jose Fire and that succession plan. So I can, I can make sure that I, I leave with the appropriate staff in place there. But what I saw, when I saw, you know, when I come into an incident. And they, they've hired me or they brought me in mutual aid, there's usually object, there's objectives there, there's a plan, there's an organization in place to make things happen. There's clear objectives stated. You know, in the fire service world, we call that the ICS 202 and 203, NIP. And when I looked at your strategic plan and I was talking with, with. General Manager Logan, it was very clear that you had a strategic plan in place, which very clearly identified objectives. And very clearly identified deliverables. And to see that an organization where not only did they have a staff. That was working on those things, they had the commissioners assigned as to, you know, leading that strategic goal and that responsibility. Is a very, was, was honestly very impressive. And so, you know, read, reading your strategic plan, it was solid. It was clear. It was things I could sink my teeth into. Like when I come onto an incident and they tell me they need from, you know, a control line from point A to point B, I have my direction and I put that in with the resources given. And so I feel like, you know, you've got in place with Fire Safe Council, the resources, you've got so much work already in play, you know, in, in place to set the objectives, to set the trajectory. And that's phenomenal. I, I've seen, especially in the state and, and, and seen a lot of organizations struggle to do that due to lack of resources and transitions. And so it was very impressive to see that the district had it. And, and one sentence really caught my, my eye. It was this, now more than ever, public agencies, and this is from page one of your strategic plan. Now more than ever, public agencies must coordinate and work together to deliver critical services in a time of increased demands and limited resource. The successor strategic plan process provides the opportunity to evaluate the district's role in the community beyond. We can see overlapping networks of communication, expertise and support throughout the community, and now seek to broaden our regional impact. And basically, as soon as I read that, I just said, how can I help? I mean, I think I can help. And I, I just wanted to say, how can I help? You know, Commissioner, I mean, General Manager Logan and Denise and, and I've, and I've listened to your other meetings. It's clear, there's a clear process and what you have to get work done. Clear assignments. It's a place that I know that I'll be held accountable. And so really, there was a lot of justification and, and flexibility in this 20 hour a week allowed me to continue in the, finish my transition with San Jose. But then step into an organization that really had their, 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 so much work done already. And it was easy for me to dovetail and kind of align into what you needed with my experience and with my expertise. And so I went through this specifically in preparation for this meeting, because I know there's four things, and this is all yours. This is your language. This is nothing new to you. These are your six strategic goals. And, and, and these are your, you know, six descriptions. And I didn't outline all the deliverables, you know, you as the, the commissioners, if you want to ask me questions after this on specific deliverables, how I can help. But in looking at my service contract, there's really specific four ones, you know, like. When I think about what you have Commissioner Tyson in the CWCP. You know, I, I, I bring experience to the community and stakeholder process and implementation. So when you, you know, there's so much that goes into the CIPP, into the CWPP, sorry, GIS mapping and understanding of evacuation procedures. What the threats are, being able to do that analysis, you know, there's, there, there's a term. And there's a term or a, one of the fire orders base all actions on current and expected fire behavior. So the CWPP needs to be aligned with the expected fire behavior with your fuels, with your topography, with the expected. You know, with, with what's going to happen if there is a fire. So I have knowledge of that, of building lines of determining where they can go, evacuation right, evacuation routes. I was involved in the Thomas Fire evacuations as a liaison officer. I, I was responsible for San Jose's Colleen Fire last year as the IC where I had to implement evacuations in Almanin Valley. And I understand those impacts. And so a clear sub CW, CWPP is going to assist with that. And I can dive right in, right in. And there's some great models around to help guide and us and, and what that might be. And I look forward to having discussions on that. You know, so, you know, next for me is looking at strategical two. You know, I, I know Commissioner Tonka, as you're also serving as the mayor of Los Altos. That you have to, you know, what are the other jurisdictions doing? What's happening? How do we align with that? When I worked on Fire Scope, I represented cities north. And I had to sit across the table with the US Forest Service representatives and Cal Fire representatives to determine what they need and find win-win solutions and policy and logistics. To come out with something that served the public and served the responders to keep them safe and effective. So I know that there's nothing in my specific work plan right now, except potentially, you know, meetings and assisting in that area. But I, I know what it's like to sit and, and work with jurisdictions on the left and to the right and all around. You know, in strategic three, I know Commissioner Kearney, you got some work that you want done and you need done. You know, in the fire service world, when there's a fire, we call it putting a black on the map, you know, because we have red lines. On the map. And so when we put, when we turn those red lines to black, that's good because we control the lines. So you've got Moody Road and Page Mill Road and all the HIZ and the, you know, getting completed all the 4291 NFPA inspections. And that's already started, as Eugenia said. But, you know, there's some agencies around that, 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 you know, have the goal of every single house is touched by a 4291 inspection. And I look forward to, if that's the goal that the commission wants to go to, then, then that's what I will be able to work towards. I'm familiar with budgets. I'm familiar with project management. Most of my budget work has been in the training side of the house. Whereas most of the, my fuels management work has, has gone to, you know, there is a plan in place and not necessarily budget. But, you know, I, I, I know I, I can combine the two. And I've had to do some of the budget fuels management work with prescribed fire in the training world, but you know. I just want to be clear on, on that. But I, I can definitely, you know, get, help you get this work done. You know, with four, I know that Commissioner Vaughn isn't here. But an example of a project that I was on recently, as we implemented SVRCS with the San Jose Department is. We own the radios, but we don't own the system. So we might own or have a responsibility for the hydrants. But we don't know the water mains. And so we have to work with other companies and jurisdictions and, and, and make sure that there's win-win and those solutions. Not just maintenance, but improvements and making sure that it's there for the earthquakes and it's there for the, just, you know, available when we, when there is a fire. So I, I understand what it means, logistical systems, you know, whether they're. Fire protection systems or radio systems, infrastructure is so critical. And I know what it's like to be on a fire engine where water is 30 miles away. And you're needing water tenders. So the hydrant system you have is robust and needs maintaining and. Consideration of, you know, any potential improvements that would be appropriate. So I know, again, that's not part of my work plan, but I know that I can assist Commissioner Vaughn and General Manager Logan in this area. You know, for number five, Commissioner Sherlock, you know, there's going to be a huge lift, I think, with this evacuation planning. As I evaluate what's happening with Zone Haven and making sure that the citizens are, you know, communicated to of their, you know, role and. And, and what the evacuation routes are, you know, we may put them in, but there's, as, as. I, I believe a commissioner stated that lived on Moody Road. That, you know, communicating with the residents, it's such an important part of it. I was part of the, as I said, Thomas Fire evacuation. And, and they have a wonderful, robust system down there like Zone Haven. But the communication to the residents and the preparation of those residents, so that way they're not coming out of the road where the fire engines are coming in. Was, it was, is hugely important. And if it's not done correctly, if we're not communicating to the, to, with the partners and strengthening a community resilience, not just putting those systems in place. And those plans in place, then that, that can be a huge gap. So I appreciate identifying this as a strategic goal. And so, you know, to continue to identify opportunities to benefit, you know, a broader regional area and support a common interest, because the, the evacuation part is going to be huge. And then, you know, you've got the recovery part of how do we get back to normal when we have emergencies? So I really appreciate that, you know, the, the, the pro, building programs of outreach and communication, education, as I've seen in the teen cert program. I mean, that's so phenomenal that you've done that. And, and, and to actually put that on with, with children and parent consent and legal issues and the logistical issues and making that happen speaks a lot to what you're capable of. And then, you know, in the, in the last one, you know, strategical six. You know, I've got to look at, and one of the things that I'm responsible for is the district personnel, see what we can do, succession planning. But it's also, you know, and I know that bringing me on is part of that, helping the staff and helping Denise, who can only work 20 hours, but. Succession planning, you know, Chief Spring, I mean, not sorry, Chief Spring, Commissioner Spring is, is one of my. Is one of my hearts, because, you know, the seeing those teens, one day there might be one of you. One of those teens might come back after going to school and getting a job, might come back and replace one of you. And, and that's really the, the goal of succession planning is from the beginning, getting them young. I mean, maybe someday there'll be kids in open space learning about fuel and. You know, they're four years old and, and maybe that is the start even before teens, who knows? But seeing that you've already done that and seeing you're working through and that succession plan and identified that as a strategic goal is important. And then, you know, finally to wrap it up, you know. I just wanted to share, you know, for President Warren, the story shared with General Manager Logan on the Thomas Fire. So because process is so important, I've seen that, you know, having a process, we call it the planning P in ICS is so important to get people, you know, timing of meetings, when are they? Where are the agendas? You know, how do we have community input? Because on the Thomas Fire, I acted as liaison. And as you can imagine, the Thomas Fire. Dozens of agencies across multiple public safety, public works, law enforcement, emergency management, fire. And so the process that was set up, like you've set up here in, in your meeting schedule, is just having a community meeting, a cooperators meeting every 10 o'clock. And in that 10 o'clock meeting, the, the, everyone shows up and I was running the meeting. And evacuations, the, the, the fire had run through Ventura and Carpentaria and was threatening Santa Barbara. And so we started the meeting at 10 o'clock and, and we invited everybody we could, every stakeholder we could, that we thought was being impacted by the fire, we brought in. The IC was sitting there, the, the incident commander, the operations, the law enforcement, safety, the public information officer are all there for a reason. And that's the process that was set up. And so at the end of the meeting, you know, after people go through the briefing, we allow people to raise their hand and say, do anybody have any concerns they need to have? And so a man raised his hand in the back and he said, yeah, I'm from the Cut Flowers Association. And we're losing about $2.2 million a day and the Rose Bowl parade's coming up. Is there something we can do to kind of, you know, help us? And, and literally by seven o'clock the next morning, because of the organization and the process setup. Again, if the process isn't set up, if the meeting isn't set up, if, if they're not set up, this doesn't happen. Within, by seven o'clock the next morning, in, in an area that had been hard evacuation, you were having checkpoints with. Through the PIO shop and emergency management, you had Cut Flower Association workers being able to get into those greenhouses that were deemed safe by safety. Law enforcement had established checkpoints that was communicated to the workers that weren't there at that first meeting. So literally within 24 hours, you had a whole organization. A whole cut flowers association that was losing $2.2 million today, the next day they were losing $200,000 a day. And that, that later on that December, there were some pretty happy grandmothers in Pasadena and pretty happy children in Pasadena. Because of the work and the process and the organization that was set up, which again, these things don't happen unless the process and organization is set up. And so that one was really rewarding for me, because being in the fire service is often put out the fire and leave. But it's really about planning. It's really about teaching people to live with fire, helping them through the evacuations and then making sure that once you're finished with the fire. That you move to the recovery phase as quickly as possible. Because we could have saved the house or the greenhouses, but if we don't get the workers back in, then mortgages are lost and, you know, business loans don't get paid off. So that really hit home for me. And there's been lots of other examples over my period of, of career of a battalion chief, where it's so important. To holistically look at the needs of a community and not just at putting black on the map and controlling the fire line. That's an important part. But there's so many other pieces to it that, and I'm looking forward to stepping in and diving in as Chief Glass knows and many other people know me in this county. I, I don't, it's either I'm all in or not. So I'm not sure whether I'll be able to wait till January to start if you need me that much. But I can do everything I can with the 20 hours or a, a week I can and, and work with General Manager Logan in my transition to full time. Thank you for the time. And if you have any questions, I, I can still, and I don't need water.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Jay, anything else you want to say before I take questions and comments from the commission?
I think I should just rest my case, but I would like to say that I recommend approval of the independent contractor agreement with David Barnett. And open it to questions if, if any commissioners have questions, but that's, that's the end of my comments and questions, unless you'd like to move on to a, a, a motion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jay. George, did you have a question?
No, I didn't, but I had two important statements. One is that as the holder of CWPP, item number one. I'm enthused to see that this level of support is available to help us with updating that important document, which involves pulling. Information that, that I can't readily find that I, that I think David could. That's my first statement. My second statement is a little off subject in it, but it. It refers to something you mentioned earlier in your presentations, and that is go bears. And Commissioner Sherlock, can I get a go bears out of you?
There's, yep, you bet. You're very welcome to our agency.
Me, you know, I got a, I got a Berkeley degree too. You're still getting welcome territory.
Oh, I didn't know that.
All I can say is who's got the ax?
Because it doesn't really matter. The ax doesn't really matter because the cow always has the play. It doesn't really matter. Like we could, you, Stanford could win for every single one from here on out, but we have the play.
We have been. All right, any other further questions from the commissioners?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for your preparation on this. It was the alignment with your experience and our strategic goals really, really helped. I appreciate it, the time you put in.
Thank you. All right. So with that, I'll now entertain a motion to accept, approve item 10B1. So looking for a motion from a commissioner?
So moved, Kearney.
Need a second please? Thank you. So the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Is there any public comment on this item? Alan, I see you have your hand up. Alan?
Yes, thank you very much. Very impressive presentation. I enjoyed it immensely. Just one question. General Manager Logan said the contract was through December 21st. When I look at the contract, it actually says December 22nd and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alan, for the, the checking, checking it, making sure that the details are correct. Thank you. Any other public comment? Questions? All right, hearing that, we will now move to a vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the vote.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, Mark, you did say that this was to approve item 10BI, but it's actually just to approve item 10B.
Correct. The 10BI is the memorandum report. This is item 10B. Thank you, Corey.
You're welcome. Okay, so we're moving, or we're taking the vote to.
All right.
Do I need to amend that motion or?
We need to amend the emotion.
Sure, you can amend the motion.
So moved.
Need a second from? Need a second from? Thank you, Kavita. All right, so the amended motion is on the floor. Any public comment? Any commissioner comment with that? We're looking for District Clerk Vargas, we're looking for a vote on 10B, please.
All right, President Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka? And Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, David. Look forward to working with you, even though you went to the wrong school.
Thank you very much. And I'm honored by the unanimous vote of the district. And I look forward to talking with each one of you and to working with the staff.
Very good. All right. Thank you. We will now move to item 11 personnel. Item 11A through D are various personnel matter, matters. General Manager Logan, please present the items.
Ah, yes, thank you. And thank you, Chief Barnett, for your great presentation. Moving on to item 11A, this is an update on the recruitment of the district operations manager's position. And I have with me tonight, the proprietor from its personnel, and that's Rebecca Burnside. Who assisted us with the sourcing for this position. And Rebecca, I'll just turn it over to you and just if, if there's any questions, you want to make any comments. But I will say that there were 49 applicants that were looked at. And of those, about five were qualified for consideration. All of that was done in probably about a month's time. So we put a real urgency behind this recruitment process. And through that process and through contacts and sourcing, Chief Barnett was made available to us. And so I really appreciate that. But at this point, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Burnside and she'll provide, she provided the sourcing services to the commission if there's any questions. Rebecca, are you there?
I am. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for letting me speak to you a little bit about your exciting position that I did some sourcing for. I did a lot of outreach to various former department people that were retired, were people that I targeted. So I did a lot of outreach to various retired city managers, assistant city managers and department heads. And we did feel the number of good candidates. And I have to say that a number of people had heard of your district. And we're excited about the, the prospect. So.
Well, thank you for those comments. Any questions about just the recruitment or anything that will really lead into the next item? Okay, what I would like in 11B is for the commission to consider direction to the general manager. To return on July 27th with options and a recommendation for possible employment of a full-time district operation manager. And I think you've seen a candidate that's very high on my list and certainly will be high on your list. And that would be what we can discuss then on July 27th. So no other comments about that, but would like to have conversation if that's the way to proceed.
All right. So I think, thank you, General Manager Logan. So I think what we need to do is. You want to get a direction from the sense, a sense of direction from the commissioners regarding item 11B. Which is direction from the, to the general manager, returning on April, July 27th. With options and a recommendation for possible employment for a full-time general manager or operations manager, excuse me. So I wanted to get a sense from the commission here so that we can. Provide direction to Jay on how she should proceed over the next five weeks. So I think this structure, the structure of this, I want to propose that I'm in favor of General Manager Logan. Coming back with her recommendation and potentially even a contract in place. If she is able to get that in place for a potential hire for a operations manager is what I'd like to propose. Any other comments, questions, directions, modifications from my fellow commissioners?
Sounds good to me.
Kavita, you were muted.
I'd like to support that too. I'd be in favor of that.
Joan, were you?
As well, yes.
All right. So Jay, I think you heard it. Go ahead and please proceed with putting together your recommendation and potentially even a contract in place.
Yeah. So what I'll do is I've asked Rebecca Burnside to suspend the recruitment. I think we have the candidate that, you know, we're interested in. He is employed full-time right now, will be able to provide us some part-time consulting. And then toward the end of July, I think. Chief Barnett will have a better understanding of where he is with the transition and his succession planning with his 25-year employer. And I can come back with some firm recommendations on how to fill the position and he would be my top candidate. So that just gives you an idea of what my mind is and how I would see the next weeks going. In July, you notice we do have a very late meeting, which is July 27th. And I'm concerned because now we're getting into fire season. There's a lot that's going to be happening. And I'm just so happy that Chief Barnett is available to us as a consultant and then a very good potential. To be the operations manager and can help us get through some tough fire seasons. It'll go all the way through October, maybe into November as we experienced last year. So this is a very important position and personnel to help us shore up as a fire district to have those kinds of resources and expertise. So that's my comment there. And I think I've got clear direction and, and an understanding with the commission as to how to proceed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jay. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll now move to item 12, which is the financial consultant report.
11C.
Oh, 11C.
Comment there.
So, yeah, go ahead, Jay, please.
Yes. What I'd like to do is just to advise the commission that the, there was a health order on May 18th. From Santa Clara County Health Department, and it's focused on establishing measures to protect the community from COVID-19. And in those, it is a basic way of ascertaining vaccination status. Of not only employees, but volunteers, contractors, subcontractors. And I just want to assure the commission that I've been able to work very helpfully with county council's office and various members of county council. They're specialists in this area. And we do have a good path going forward to be able to comply with those health orders. And to be able to ascertain that status and just be one of the guiding lights for the county. As to how employers properly handle the circumstances with COVID-19. And I didn't want to say that we represented that at the teen cert graduation on Saturday. And one of the things I said to staff is let's be models to certs and to the volunteers that are here as to how we properly handle. Outdoor, safe gatherings with COVID-19 restrictions in place. So I just wanted to mention that on 11C. Thank you.
And then if. Thank you. 11D, please.
Yeah, move to 11D. I think this is very important, you know, as part of goal six. We're building the district's personnel and infrastructure priorities. And that would be to approve a district anti-discrimination harassment retaliation policy. And the policy is there for your review. We'll put it back on the agenda in July for either changes or for adoption. But the policy is modeled from the central fire policy and from, it's been reviewed by county council. And I do want to thank county council for helping us pull this together as well as Acting Chief Glass. Who provided me the resources to be able to utilize the, the central fire policy. So that's the introduction to, to item D. And I'll return for at a future meeting and then you can provide direction and we can adopt the policy. Thank you.
Great. Look forward to seeing that on the future agenda.
Yes, thank you. That completes items 11.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions from commissioners? Any questions, comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll now move to item 12, which is the financial consultant report. And 12A through C are the various reports, amendments and resolutions associated with fiscal 21. 22 budget. Item 20LD was removed from the agenda under the consent calendar. Financial Consultant Vargas, please present the items.
Right, thank you. We can go to the second slide. An update on the county public budget hearings that was heard at the Board of Supervisors budget hearing meeting today. Item number 77 was to consider the county executive fiscal year 22 recommended budget. And I'm happy to report that that item passed. And so now it is on to the Board of Supervisors meeting of June 17th to finalize the county executives fiscal year 22 budget. And they, I mentioned at the last meeting, the budget as presented at the workshops was. It had a double entry of an extra $500,000. And, and as you can see on the little snapshot, that has been corrected. So we are now back to county executives recommended budget matches the budget that was approved. In revenues and expenditures. And then next slide, if I could. We're also going to look for items D and C. I am going to ask separately for adoption of an amended fiscal year 22 budget. Then the fiscal year 22 budget narrative and budget by month spreadsheet. And this just outlines quickly for you the changes that were made. There was no. Change to the bottom line of contract services. So there was no action necessary. At the county level because they just look at that total contract services amount. So we, we moved some numbers around that fire engine water tender, we originally had 550. Changed it to half a million to match Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District budget. Station eight, we'd originally budgeted 400,000. And now that we have successfully completed that contract. I bumped that up to 575. And then contract services contingency was bumped up from 350 to 400. The apparatus enhancements. I have discussed with Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District, that full amount will be paid in the current fiscal year. So it has been completely removed from fiscal year 22, which is how I was able to get the extra funding where we needed it in station eight. So what we're going to do tonight is item 12B, adopt this amended budget. And because we are not, we've deleted 12D from the agenda. I guess we're kind of doing a modification of what is in your agenda packet. There will be no approval of changes to the committed fund balance. So what you see in your agenda packet. Has new numbers for committed funds for fiscal year 22, but we're going to leave it as it was shown in fiscal year 21. Until we have further direction from county council in the county on that. And same goes for the budget narrative. So approval of 12B and 12C, which I recommend. But with that sort of stickler of, we're not changing the committed funds. And that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, Corey. All right. So with that, we will, are there any clarifying questions from the commissions at this time, commissioners? Okay, so what we're going to do here is we'll consider items 12 and 12B and 12C individually. So it will do this one at a time. I will now entertain a motion for item 12B, adoption of the amended budget. So I need a motion and a second, please. Kavita? Who was the second? Was it Joan?
It is me.
Thank you. All right.
President Warren, can you just confirm, please, that the motion includes the recommendation from Ms. Vargas regarding the committed funds, changing that? Or deleting the reference to the committed funds because we didn't act on 12D?
All right, Kavita, did you hear the question from county council for the, the clarification from county council? Thank you. Do you support that, Joan, in your second? Thank you. All right. So the motion is in front of us to adopt 12B. Is there any further discussion from commissioners? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none, District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka? I'm sorry, Kavita.
I don't know what's going on. Yes.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Tyson? George? See, unmute, there you go.
There we go.
Oh, I thought, I guess I was too quick. Yes.
Yeah, wonderful. All right. And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move to item 12C, adoption of the amended budget narrative. And the mud, and the budget by month. So I need. Chris, do we need to have a similar statement about the committed funds in this amendment?
Yes, it would be helpful for the motion to incorporate Corey's recommended changes in relating to committed funds. Thank you.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion for 12, 12C.
Spreen will move.
Thank you, Roger. Need a second? Thank you, Kavita. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. All right, we'll now move to vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka? And Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move to item 13, the 20, 20, 21, 20, 22 strategic plan goals. Items 13A is a report on the implementation of goals. Two and four strategic planning consultant Scott, please introduce the item.
Thank you, President Warren. Good evening, everyone. We're pleased to be back with two more updates tonight on goals two and four. And I feel like we had an excellent tutorial on the whole strategic plan by Dave Barnett tonight. And so just going from there, I'm pleased to introduce Commissioner Kavita Tonka. She is a new commissioner and also sits on town council and serves as mayor. And I will pull up the slides and.
Thank you, Marcy. Actually, I want to say that none of this would have been possible without the tremendous support that I got from Marcy. She was very cognizant of the fact that I was a new commissioner and constantly kept me updated. On the meetings that were occurring and the constant updates that were happening. So thank you for that, Marcy. I really do appreciate it. So in terms of strategic, strategic goal two, for the purposes of today's meeting. I'd like to focus on the two parallel studies that are going on in Santa Clara County. But I guess I would be remiss if I didn't read the goal two for the sake of the other, other commissioners here today. So let me just start by reiterating the key elements of strategic goal two. The main focus has been to make sure that we continue to follow up on the county management audit reports. We want to continue participating in the two concurrent studies that are happening in Santa Clara County. We have established district record management system. And we've made sure that we follow the county procurement policies and procedures. And as you know, we have been doing all of this and we will continue to make sure that we stay on track. And make sure that we address everything that came up in the county management audit recommendations. And really stay on top of this. So since October of 2000, Board of Supervisors meeting. The district continues to comply with all the audit recommendations that were approved by the Board of Supervisors. We give written and oral reports at the FGOC and the HUELEF meetings. We give written and oral reports at the F G O C and the H U L E F meetings. Written reports are also always available in the agenda packages at each meetings that are at meeting, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And that really gives us an opportunity to get feedback from not just the Board of Supervisors, but also from the management audit staff. So I think it's a really great mechanism by which we make sure that we're constantly checking in to make sure that we're following all the recommendations with effort in the audit and really staying on track. So in terms of records and procurement, we, we worked with the retired city clerk and county staff on records and procedures. We've digitized all pertinent records. We utilize the county procurement procedures. And we make sure that all agreements are reviewed to, to make sure that they, you know, they are legal, they conform to county requirements and that they're reviewed by county council. So at this present time, as I mentioned earlier, there are two concurrent studies that are really going on in Santa Clara County. Then this is a really good one pager that really explains in detail about information about the LAFCO study because in the past I've been getting a lot of questions about the commonalities and the differences between the LAFCO study and the county study. But this one sheet is really a clarifying document, if you will, and really explains the key points that the count LAFCO study will focus on. It's also in tonight's agenda as item five T. And if, and if you missed that, it will be on the LAFCO website. So if you wish to refer to it at any point in time, all you need to do is to go to the LAFCO website and it is readily available. A point to note that in the far right column, an easy way to sign up for emails and updates would be to click on this link here. And I would recommend that all of us really do this, take the time to do this because, you know, this way we really are up to date on what's happening and how the LAFCO study is proceeding and what's really going on. Now, in terms of LAFCO, you know, they have initiated their third round of studies. And this one includes a countywide bi-service review. There will be an informational webpage that you will, you can reach out to and look at it for information. There will also be opportunities for public outreach and, you know, there'll be time to do a survey and I think all across should remain up to speed and abreast to make sure that, you know, we are aware of the timeline of when this happens. It looks like the outreach will happen between July of twenty twenty-one, at which time the community survey will happen and there'll also be virtual meetings in July. In terms of the communities, we are understanding is that there will be eight questions. And half of these will be devoted to wildfire preparedness. And, and that's what the consultant tells us now. So, you know, LAFCO will also be hold, holding community meetings and it will be a good time for residents and members of the community to really weigh in. And, you know, because they are looking for input and it will be great if we can do that. The LAFCO study is really guided by the Technical Advisory Committee, a TAC. It consists of three city managers in alternate. The Los Altos Hills City Manager Carl Cahill is on this TAC committee and three fire chiefs. And they have met twice so far. And what they do is really, they review the consultant's approach on public outreach and weigh in. And really, from the areas in terms of what is the best mechanism by which we can make sure that the public inputs we receive is really holistic and rounded and really covers everything that we're looking for to inform ourselves. Another study that's, we're as complete. And LAFCO has certain mandated, you know, review elements which include adequacy of public services, the status of the infrastructure and the fire district's experience influence. But other factors have been added to make sure that we cover things that, you know, we're not necessarily on top of our mind. So, you know, looking at climate change, wildland fire risk, regional models for fire services, A M S. So those will be the things that it'll be looking at. In terms of the county initiated study, the idea is really to evaluate the effectiveness, so to say, of current and emerging. And a lot of the increased fire risk and, you know, wildfire risk really. Or abundance of fuel in the wildland area and the climate change that we see in the current environment. So what we can, what we, what they will be doing as well is they'll, they'll be reaching out to and doing a community survey. They will be doing outreach. There will be six town hall meetings. And there'll be a draft report coming out in early twenty twenty-two. And in terms of, you know, the county studies, the key areas they will be addressing is, of course, all the previous studies. But really, fire threats, fire risk mitigation, service delivery, resources and service zones. These really are the key areas the consultant will address in the county. You know, it's interesting, a lot of people have asked me the question as to what are the differences and similarities between these two concurrent studies? The reality is that these two studies are very similar to the extent that they're really tracking similar, similar timeline. They have a similar set of stakeholders who are involved in both studies. In terms of the oversight, in terms of the LAFCO study, the T A C or the Technical Advisory Committee that is comprised of the city three city managers and the fire chiefs, they will really be looking at over the shoulder of the consultant and providing oversight to make sure that we are a steer on track. And in terms of the county study, it will be the chief administrative officer of the county will be responsible for the county study. And of course, the Board of Supervisors will be overseeing that work. So in terms of future updates, we will be sending reminders to the commissioners and these will be posted on the Los Altos Hills County Bi-District Website. And I'd like to urge you to, you know, stay updated and spread the word because we would like our residents and our greater community to really participate in the online survey opportunities. Because this is our opportunity to really speak up and address and highlight the issues that we care about and those that are important to our community. It's also an opportunity to really speak at community meetings and weigh in. In terms of draft reports, you know, it's, it's, you know, we will also be able to find out when they'll be available. So as, I'd like to urge you all to go to that link on that one pager and really sign up so that you'll stay abreast on all, all that at the time so that we can really engage in this process. So that's what I have for now and I look forward to really, you know, staying abreast on what really happens in these meetings and weighing when the time comes. So thank you for that opportunity to speak about, you know, go to, and I will keep you posted.
Thank you, Commissioner Tonka, for that presentation. Do any commissioners have questions? With regard to the presentation, very good.
Well, I just have, I'm looking for the link. I think it's in my materials. I'm just digging. Might want to re-mail that.
I will send that out to all the commissioners. I'll, I'll send you the link to the website and you just simply fill out the E-form, put in your name and email address, and then you'll get all the auto, auto updates.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so we have one other presentation. Let me pull up the slides. And we have Commissioner, gosh, sorry, Commissioner Vaughn was scheduled to present and he sent me an email a little while ago. He's been tied up and is not able to make it. However, this presentation is a team presentation, so I will kick it off and then we will go from there and just carry forward. And I see Jeff is here with another interesting background. Maybe you can explain that when it comes to your turn, Jeff.
Well, here.
This is strategic goal number four. And sorry about that. Here we go. We're here to talk about the water system. And this goal revolves around water system infrastructure and the coordination between the district and various regional entities that impact the water system. So just real briefly, protection of property, life safety and support of fire suppression is supported by the district's development of standard operating procedures or S O Ps to guide the commission and staff on issues around the hydrant system. And as changes occur, whether it's increased development, an incident that damages part of the system or a capital project initiated by the town or Prisima Hills Water, the S O Ps and guidelines and policy will provide parameters for decisions. Part of this goal includes collecting and maintaining data about the hydrant system as well as using district funding to support a portable water resource, a water tender for central fire. And so at this point, I'd like to introduce Jeff Tarantino, Vice President of Freyer and Loretta Inc. to describe progress on several specific aspects of goal four.
Great. Thank you, Marcy. Apologies for that background noise there. We're at my parents' house and, well, my father was very interested in what we were doing in here. So, um, so, and then as far as my background, the background images are just in, in the spirit of the fire commission and, you know, improving resiliency, this is a, an image of a, of a raw water pipeline that was destroyed during the C Z U fire last year and, and firing the bodies and be supporting the Santa Rosa Valley Water District to, to restore service. And so that was something that, you know, we just, I just thought of an interesting photo that folks on the call may be interested in. So yes, thank you, Marcy. So Frey and Loretta has been assisting the district with engineering services related to the fire system. And we have been providing technical assistance, not only for responding to fire hydrant strikes and getting those repaired, but also with reviewing policies and procedures for addressing fire hydrant strikes, coordination with the water district, coordination with the town. And so in February, F and L with assistance from General Manager Logan and Emergency Services Director Gluhan, we facilitated a discussion amongst our partner agencies where we have a lot of interface with to, to really identify those areas where we are interfacing with those agencies, you know, with Prisima Hill. How do we respond to fire hydrant strikes? How do we get that fire hydrant restored and serviced in a timely manner? And then once the construction is, is completed, restoring that to service. Working with the town when they have a paving project that may impact district fire hydrant facilities. So, so it's really important to really kind of get the stakeholders around the table, kind of identify those critical points of interface. And then we are in the process of developing those, those standard operating, operating policies which will be returned to the commission at a future date to review. Next slide. And as, as the commissioners may recall, the, there are two agreements between County of Santa Clara and Prisima Hills Water District really establish the responsibilities of the fire district. In particular, the five hundred and forty hydrants that the district is, is responsible for. There was a eight-phase project to, to replace a majority of those fire hydrants between twenty ten and twenty seventeen. And, you know, that project area was focused really within the Prisima Hills Water Service District, which is one of the two water companies that the fire district overlaps with. The, the second water purveyor, Cal Water, is, actually operates and maintains all the fire hydrants in their district. But we do collaborate with, with Cal Water as they're doing replacement projects and, and, and looking at, you know, opportunities to add fire hydrants when appropriate. And in addition, Foothill Colleges within our, within the fire district and they have their own system of hydrants. And ultimately, for the ongoing maintenance of, of the hydrants through the existing agreement between district and central fire, central fire maintains and, and all, all of the hydrants within the district. And with that, I will turn over General Manager Logan.
Okay, thank you so much. The district has worked with County Council to develop an on-call contractor through the bidding process. And in fact, the commission approved that tonight by consent. And so what this does is provide us the on-call contractor to expedite the access and repair to the damage and return the hydrant to service quickly. Without the on-call contractor, Jeff Tarantino and myself and County Council, it was taking sometimes two to three weeks to get a hydrant repaired because we would have to go through all the logistics and county procurement to be able to put the, the agreement together, assess the damage. And it was too much of a delay. So the on-call contractor puts all of that in process right now. The agreements are all there and we call that contractor for, for quick response. So we're very pleased for that. And then additionally, in the case of road repair or other capital projects, F and L will analyze and coordinate the district's responsibilities for large, large projects that impact multiple entities. And again, County Council has been extremely helpful to us in helping us with those agreements, understanding the alignment between ourselves and other agencies as we do our inter-agency agreements and work and where the, the parameters are that then comport with the management audit findings. So we're on the next slide. We're in the process now of developing a database of relative details about each of the five hundred and forty hydrants. And this information will be helpful in a variety of situations, including responding to hydrant strikes, developing proposals in system-wide functioning and tracking and inventorying the capital assets that the hydrants represent. And I've got to say, Jeff, when you showed that picture of the water main after the C Z U fire, it kind of made me gulp because that could be us at any day with our, our hydrants and our assets destroyed. And we have to be so vigilant that we maintain, keep them, ensure them, have good records, can go back and restore and revitalize what our assets are. And, and these five hundred and forty hydrants certainly represent that. So thank you. Next slide. We've talked about the water tender and I'm very excited about this opportunity to make this purchase and then provide this apparatus to, to central fire to be able to help us protect our, our jurisdiction. And this is a mobile water resource, resource. We're working with, with central fire for the purchase and it will provide water for a fire event. And I'll tell you just a quick little story. When I was receiving my first COVID nineteen vaccine, I was talking with a firefighter who was there. And as it turned out, he knew, knew Los Altos Hills very, district very well. And he said to me, I was the first firefighter on site at the burn preserve fire. And I said, oh my gosh, what did you do? He said, we were so fortunate. We, we had a water tender nearby. Without the water tender, it would have been a very different story. And I said to him, looked him straight in the eye and I said, you know what? This district is ordering a water tender. We have that in the operation right now. And he said, that's the best thing you can do. Now, I can read a lot of articles. I can talk to a lot of people. But when, when the boots on the ground say that, that have been there and done it, it really meant a lot to me. So I thank Chief Glass and Central Fire for helping us and with, with County Council and also the budget process to be able to use our funding and expend the funds for this magnificent apparatus. It's going to be this mobile water device that helps us in so many ways. So fire suppression crews will be able to respond quickly. The tender brings the water to where it's needed and then crews can use it from there. And the example again is the burn preserve. Thank you. Next slide. And our work continues. Policies will be consistent and collate to, to more efficient work. Running hydrant systems, understanding how to repair them, understanding. Running hydrant systems, understanding how to repair them, understanding the collaboration amongst agencies when we have shared infrastructure is complicated and developing these standard operating procedures will provide information, will inform the commission when these decisions come to you and you have to make decisions about them. So that's what our policies and our guidelines are all about. And Frayer and Loretta, Jeff Tarantino is very helpful in pulling that together for us. And so I think that ends my slides. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Ms. Melvin, he's, he's the one that could have really led us through this with all of his expertise as a battalion chief who fought the Oakland Hills fires. So to Melvin out there, we hope we, we did you proud by, by having some slides here. Thank you.
Can I see a question, Commissioner Kearney?
Yeah, it's for Chief Glass. Is that okay? So Chief Glass, is that tender OES or mutual aid or is that, is that going to be dedicated to the district?
I think it's a discussion that we can have with the commission as how you want to see it. I mean, my recommendation would be to put it in the mutual aid system because you have the ability to then receive mutual aid by providing that unit. The way that mutual aid works is, is your district would need to be able to provide reciprocal services to another jurisdiction. So if you hope to receive a water tender, you would then be willing to send your water tender. But again, we can put, have further discussions with the general manager, the potential contractor that the commission is going to bring on board and the commission as to how to utilize that best within Los Altos Hills and County.
Perfect. Thanks.
We want to leverage our resources. And Chief Glass, you want to mention how long it takes to get one? You just can't go down and get one easily and handily, what the process we're in right now.
Yeah, the process is, it, and again, I guess I should have given it in fire chiefs update, but I do have an update for the, the rescue 74 replacement as well. But water tenders, all apparatus takes about a year to build. So from the time that we actually sign on the PO, we go to a pre-construction meeting. That's when the clock actually starts and the contract is signed. And then we go ahead and, and we'll do a mid-build inspection and then a final inspection, some acceptance. And then we place the unit into service. So all told, it takes about, the last build was 400 days. That's what the contractual time was. We have submitted a request for a, what we call the preliminary drawing and, and long specifications for that unit. The nice thing is, is that we believe Orange County Fire Authority has recently purchased that particular unit, which we think would be very well suited for, for the district. Again, we'll have a advisory team from our apparatus committee review it to make sure that it is the right size, the right capability, the appropriate pump, the right size, amount of power, the proper, proper amount of gallonage. Right now, we are currently specking somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 gallons, which is equivalent to between three to four fire engines worth of water. So that's very helpful. And again, transitioning to the rescue 74 project, we did get an update on that. It is in process. So our clock started about 30 days ago. So we should see that sometime about a year from now.
Very good. Any other commissioner comments or questions? I see we have a question from the member of the public, Alan.
Yes, thank you very much. My question is, is where would the tender be housed? How would be staffed? And is it a four-wheel drive vehicle? Thank you.
At this point, the discussion has not been had with the, the general manager on the location of the apparatus. We are a little bit space limited at the Almonti Fire Station and our current contract requires us to have the truck, the rescue and the type three. So again, we need to look at some alternative options that is, that is on the plan before, again, we haven't even bought the, the unit yet. So we have a lot of time to figure these items out before we actually make a decision to expend the funds and purchase the unit. The staffing model is typically two personnel. And again, that can be a cross-staffed unit, meaning that two from the rescue move on to that unit and, and the rescue then goes with the fire captain and a driver, and then we have a driver and a firefighter on the water tender. The option for us to also take the type three with the water tender exists in a wildland fire scenario. So again, the staffing requirements have not been particularly ironed out yet. But again, we have a model that we currently use and we would, we would recommend that as a starting point. And what was the last, was there one more question in there, Alan? I apologize.
That's quite all right, Chief Glass. I was just questioning whether it was a four-wheel drive tender.
At this point, the one in the picture is four by two. We do not have a four by four water tender. There is a center of gravity concern and we typically don't want to see a vehicle of that weight off-road. They do make them. However, we believe a four by two model is the best solution for the district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Warren, I would just highlight the comments that Chief Glass and General Manager Logan made that this item will be coming back before your commission to work on the, both the operational issues, the financial issues, the deployment issues, all those things are for future meetings. And, and this is really a strategic planning, goal set, goal setting and goal discussion. But I'm sure we'll be back in front of the commission with all that information and all those questions are very helpful to guide future staff presentations and deliberations.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Counsel, Charlton. Yes. All right. So back to the strategic goals. Any further questions from the commissioners around the report? Any further questions from the public? Marcy, anything to wrap this up?
No, thank you to everyone who contributed for these presentations and that concludes the presentation on item 13.
President Warren, I'd like to make a remark that, just, just thank you to the commissioners and to Marcy Scott and for our model of aligning a commissioner with each of the goals. I think you can really see in reflection now that we're halfway through the year. The strategic plan was adopted in January of 21 and here we are in June. And we've already gotten through six of the goals, which are all of the goals and had a nice refresh and update. And I hope you as commissioners feel the motivation of how the strategic plan is setting our blueprint and our path. It truly is becoming and is one of the pillars of the district along with the CWPP and then the budget that resources all of our programs. So I think it's a good time just to kind of stop, think about it, pat yourself on the back and realize awesome achievement. And thank you so much for all the support. President Warren and the commissioners and Marcy Scott particularly. Awesome job. Thank you. And staff.
Thank you, Jay. All right. So let's close out item 13. I just have to do the formalities here. Is there any further comments from the commission? Any additional public comments or questions? All right, hearing none. We'll now move on to item 14, Commission Member Reports. This is the opportunity for commissioners to provide reports on any future agenda topics. Are there any comments from the commissioners on item 14? I'm not seeing any. All right. Thank you. So if there is none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. All right. We'll now move on to item 15, which is on the agenda, but we made a decision earlier that we were able to address all the items we needed to in the previous closed session. So we will actually be skipping item 15 and 16, which was to adjourn to closed session and then to return. Which brings us to item 17, which is adjournment. This concludes the June 15th, 2021 regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, the meeting.
President Warren, it looks like, it looks like a member of the public has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed before we get to adjournment, Alan. Which agenda item is this on? Alan, you're on mute.
Thank you very much. I just wondered if there was a report out from the closed session. And since I have the mic for just a second, Chief Glass, please pass along our best wishes to Chief Bowden for fast recovery. Thank you.
The, Mr. President, if I may.
Please, please.
So when we started this meeting, there was no report out. That was announced by Assistant County Council, Rob Coelho, relating to the special meeting. There was no report of action taken in closed session for items 15 and 16. Since the commission is not adjourning to closed session, there would be no need to, to do a further reportable action since essentially that item is being deleted from the agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chris, for keeping us on track. All right. With that, seeing no further items. This concludes the June 15th, 2021 regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at 9:25 PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom, June 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
27, that's a typo.
There's just, okay, so for the record, it's July 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Sir, General Analyst BB, please stop the recording.